The intention was pretty clear.
I wasn't there, so I can't say.
Probably best to go back and review the film to make sure it's accurately noted.
I'm sorry.
I'd say it's probably best to go back and review the film to make sure it was accurately noted.
Okay, we could go ahead and continue that item to the next meeting. We will go ahead, consensus from council, continue the minutes to the next meeting, and staff will go back and review it.
And the second item?
Can I have a vote on the minutes, please? I'm sorry.
All those in favor of postponing till the next meeting?
Aye.
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 I just adjusted that right now, thank you. I could tell it sounded very low when Councilmember Ringel was talking.
All right, the other item, Mr. John Ando, to update, was it to stop or something?
Yeah, so John Ando gave his presentation to us, and I asked about two stops on his plan. One was the stop at Countrywood for the seniors to go to McDonald's for a sundae or a coffee, and he said that there's a stop close by. But in that same line, I also asked him, because the plan that he was presenting shows a stop at Elizabeth and 120, and that stop was suspended in 2018 when Big Boy closed, and I asked him if that was going to be restored, and he indicated yes. That second part was not indicated in the minutes.
Discussion, motion, what do we got going on here, gentlemen?
I do recall him saying that, but again, we probably should review the minutes to confirm it.
Didn't we just vote to approve, to continue the minutes?
So I'll just include that in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then we're good to move to staff communications, then?
Sure. Director Dong Carion, do you have anything?
Not at the moment, just busy with preparing 2324 budget, that was a presentation that was presented today.
And then, I know you guys were all here before, but in case anybody knew from the audiences here, I'd like to introduce everyone to Jalen French, our new Development and Community Services Manager. His first day was today, and he's been here all day, so. We're looking forward to moving forward now that we're fully staffed at this level, to move forward on a lot of items, you know, that we've been able to move forward to due to a lot of things going on, so this will be a great opportunity to get those things going.
I just want to say thank you to Dominique and the council. I am, as Dominique mentioned, I'm looking forward, and I got a flavor of it today, looking forward to getting to know the public, the businesses, more about staff and the council, and getting into some of the issues and progressing the city along.
Welcome aboard, glad you're here.
Do you have anything, Chief Flores? Can you pull your mic down, just in case? Thank you.
Okay. Only thing I got, tomorrow, and I'll bring it out on the next council meeting tomorrow, I'm gonna have two officers receiving an award for DUIs, it's that time of the year again. So, I'm not telling you who's getting it, I'll tell you next time we get together, so.
Look forward to that.
Okay? That's it.
Okay. And so then before you, we have our staff communications, we have our report for the Police Department, Recreation, Development Services, Public Works, Building Department, Water Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant Report, and then I have some verbal items under the City Managers Reports. This round was the first round, we implemented those quarterly reports for both the SSJID project as well as the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And we also put in an update regarding the industries in the report, and although council did ask that it be done quarterly in that wastewater treatment plant report, there's a section called "Update to Industries", we think it would be easier to keep track of if we just do it monthly, and so we're just going to include it monthly, because even quarterly, our billing doesn't fit into that quarter, and so it's, it just gets kind of messy. So quarterly, we're just gonna update that from now on. And then just let us know about that item. I've got a few items. Most recently, the City of Oakdale has reached out to us. They are establishing an Animal Control or Animal Shelter Subcommittee. This item is actually going before the Oakdale City Council tonight. Their council has directed them to assign two council members to serve on that committee. That's the recommendation, I'm not sure whether that would be approved or not. However, because we receive services from the City of Oakdale for animal control and shelter services, they would obviously like us to sit and have a space on that committee. Their first meeting, they're actually meeting very quickly, their first meeting is going to be tomorrow at 5:00, and so as staff, I don't have a problem with attending those meetings and reporting back to council, but it's up to council whether or not they would look to want to add either a council member or a staff member, or Chief of Police, because usually it's our Police Department that helps with that. None of us have an issue with attending that meeting. Right now, they're meeting every two weeks. They haven't really established a schedule, but it will be some type of subcommittee. So I was thinking, at this time, I'm giving you that information and letting you know, and then by this week, I would find out how their council voted, and maybe we kind of try to match that, and then I can agendize it for the next meeting. But in that meanwhile, I'll attend any of those meetings prior to that. And then, you know, once you see, let's see what Riverbank does, if they put a council member or staff, and then you guys would have a better idea of how you would want to staff it. And, you know, that would be totally up to council, we're gonna put that on for an appointment.
I like that plan.
Okay, so I will, with your permission, I can add that to the next council meeting?
I'm okay with that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So that is where we're there for that. So we also have an item regarding an agenda item request. We did receive an agenda item request from a developer who is interested in developing a new 55-plus community in Escalon, and they are, were writing a request for reduction in development impact fees and connection fees in relation to that project. Their understanding is that the city would like to provide more housing options for seniors. However, the current fee schedule is highly cost prohibitive, and as the housing crisis continues, their hopes is to work to create local and affordable solution. So their request would include a total of 18 single-story units with 22 parking stalls, and they are looking to ask that there be an elimination of parks and recreation fees, and then request that water and sewer connection fees be reduced by 50%, and that a traffic study be minimized and/or not necessary. So this is the, they have included a conceptual site plan, but in accordance with our agenda policy, these items come in, and I bring them to you verbally at the first meeting, and then I obtain a consensus from council on whether or not you'd want this agendized for a future meeting. And so, no discussion really, because it would need to be agendized, but is there consensus from council at this time to add this item for consideration on the next meeting? Sorry.
I'm willing to listen.
Yeah, I would say the same.
I'm willing to listen.
I'm trying to keep my answers brief as possible.
So we will take this item and schedule it for that August 7th meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment slash question on the reports presented for wastewater treatment plant upgrade project and the surface water project?
Sure, I'm not sure if Supervisor Collins, he's not online, so I'm not sure what kind of answers depending on the question you'll get, but.
Okay, so, first of all, this report tells us, gives us a better idea of what they're working on. However, we have no idea where they're at, what the schedule, like, no clue when they're planning on having the 30, the 60, the 90% drawings, when we're planning on going out to bid, when it's gonna be ready for construction. We don't have any of that information, and it'd be really helpful if they could include that information in their reports.
Which one are you referring to?
Both.
Both, okay.
Because right now, I mean, if somebody came to council and said, "So what's your plan for the wastewater treatment plant?", well, we can tell you what they're working on, okay, when are they gonna be done? No idea.
And so, as, in response to like a timeline and when they go out for bid and those type of things, these projects are lacking the funding sources currently. And so, those need to be, you know, before we actually put something out for bid, we need to make sure we have the money for it. And so the wastewater treatment plant modernization is going to be, you know, a significant amount to where a rate study would need to be completed. And so, we're currently gathering quotes on rate studies to be done that will take that project into consideration, and then that would come before council for, you know, wastewater treatment plant specifically. And at the same time, the SSJID project is also a project, you know, that will need to identify the source besides water. There, we don't have that amount of money in the budget currently for that project, and so, they are probably not providing that yet, because we typically need to find that funding source first. And so, I can definitely try to get them, you know, of course, have them put as much information as they can in that, but it's specific to wastewater treatment plant for sure, that one is.
Well, let me give you an example. So we just approved the list of demands from Blackwater for $16,776, okay? Where are they on the schedule? I mean, we're approving payment, but, and this shows us what they're doing, but when are they doing it? And so, all I'm asking is if we can have some sort of timeline.
Okay, so more of like, okay.
Even if they're not ready to, even if the city as a whole is not ready to go out to construction, because we have to find the funding, at least give us a timeline when, because we're spending money on design, no one knows when it's gonna be done.
Okay. Okay.
Just to add, I was expecting the SSJID surface water connection plan to be updated in June or July. That's the last time that I heard that there should be an update coming to us. Trying to find where that was and what meeting, but I do have it on the calendar to look for the updated plan in June slash July, so I'm guessing we don't have that. Or we don't know when that's coming, is that?
I mean, it's, if that was what was, I do recall it being end of June, so we might be falling behind, they're doing environmental processes, and sometimes when you're reaching out and working with other agencies, we might not stay on that schedule.
We could get an update.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So regarding CCH, which who is the company doing the senior housing, they came to the city and did a few workshops regarding senior housing, proposed development project. They actually did follow up with me last week and indicated that the company that they were utilizing to help with the market rate study was slammed with a lot of work and applications that they were trying to complete, and they are now free, and so they will be moving forward with that market rate analysis. And so he just wanted me to provide that update to you, that they are gonna be moving forward with that. So that's moving forward as well. Excuse me. And then Center Street update, this was an item from council regarding the parking concerns that are located over there off of Center Street and First Street, in that area. We've been working with multiple property owners and business owners regarding parking issues and enforcement, cleaning up the alley. We always work for voluntary compliance, and so it does take a while for things that are code enforcement related to move forward, because the city is not trying to go out there and, you know, penalize, it's educate and encourage that these things be handled at their own expense. You know, because if the city does get involved, then we're incurring that expense, and we bring it, we bring it back to them to cover, so we are working on that. I did reach out to a property owner as well for the vacant lots, and I have not heard back yet. So, that's where we're at at this time, but this is something, you know, we'll continue to update with you as we're moving forward. But it, because it's code enforcement, it has a process to it, and so we're putting out notices, and we are making sure that because that was council direction, that we're staying on top of those notices as best as we can to keep the enforcement moving.
Just an observation, I did see that there are some vehicles that look like they may be employees or long-term parking in front of that transmission shop there on First Street. Has, they've been, have we reached out to them and asked them not to be parking during working hours on the street there to open that up for customers, or have we done that?
We've talked code enforcement regarding alleyway and outdoor storage and removal of stuff, I don't wanna say garbage, but like belongings and things like that in that area. Overall cleanup to open up those spaces that they're technically providing for the public. We have, we do have updated letters that are gonna be going out this week, encouraging people to keep their prop, the parking in front of their buildings for customer parking. We're working on putting that map together where we can indicate where other parking areas are. I know it seems kind of far away, but in the past, it has been where we've encouraged people to use the park and ride, even though it's a little ways away. And so, it's us basically updating that map and showing areas that there is ample parking, and it is a little bit of a walk, but hopefully, you know, they're moving forward until we can get the property owners together and have that meeting, which Jalen and I will be working on in the next few weeks. Now that he knows. And, just wanna make sure I got those. Okay, those are my updates at this time.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if there are none, we'll move to matters presented from the audience. Anybody in the audience have a question on staff communications, staff reports?
Kurt Danzger, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Question, well, actually Sean brought this up, it should go a little deeper than that. We got over a million dollars from the Tracy Fund to start off the surface water, so there's a budget for whatever percentage of the project is gonna be done. We got $1.4 million from COVID funds for the wastewater treatment plant, so there's a budget for that. What we don't have is a professional organization giving us a timeline, as I pointed out, with a list of priorities and what's gonna transpire, so that you can see it, you don't have to read this and go, "Forget it." This lays out what they're responsible for. They may not meet all those dates, there may be, you know, whatever, but they should come up with reasons or excuses or what have you. So, there were two things. One, we needed to get a timeline for what they're actually doing. So you're gonna need a scope and a list of what they're gonna do. So say the treatment plant, they're gonna align how many pits, they're gonna put what in front to the influence, how are they gonna upgrade the aeration out there, you know, what process? Like, it was all called out in a $72,000 report from PACE. You know, you don't have that. So what is the scope, what are they gonna do? Give us the timeline, and this is a design for the project. It's not gonna be the completion project. They've got a $1.4 million budget to design this thing. I don't even know if that's reasonable, but they need to do better than what they just gave you. That's, Jesus, I mean, that's a synopsis there. You talk dog and pony shows, Mr. Ringel. This was February of this year. This was their, this was Adura's shot at a timeline, you know, in a slide. Most of their presentation was PACE's work that they'd already done. We don't know what these guys are gonna do out there. So, staff needs to get on it and make sure that they have something that you can read, that we can read, and they're drawing down this money. As Councilman Strohman pointed out, you know, $20,000 here, $16,000 there, that's, I assume that's coming out of that $1.4 million at some point for the wastewater treatment plant, and whatever, they're at 30% for design on the surface water. Where's that money coming from? Is that the million dollars, or is that, is that from the 218 raises that we've been paying over the last few years? I don't know, neither do you, and we need to find out. That's what I had proposed in the quarterly reports. You know, so you can actually compare apples and apples here. Not just get, "Well, we're over here, we're talking to these people," and so forth. I would point out one item on the surface water here, and you can look at, this is, since the February 23rd presentation, project has been active in the following areas, it's just one item. You were told that there's gonna be a flow meter that's owned and operated by SSJID. Well, that was addressed in the PACE report there, and PACE concluded that it would be more economical to put that device, that underground unit, in over by Hogan Park, where the city owns the property. These guys are proposing or allowing SSJID to have it put closer to their treatment plant, where we've gotta buy the property from a private owner. So that's gonna jack up the price of this project there. I think somebody needs to look into that and maybe negotiate with SSJID. Does it have to be closer to their treatment plant? Like, can it be closer to the city where it costs less money? It's just an observation. Yeah, hopefully, next quarter, when we get in the October Equinox, that we'll get something that we can actually read and see what kind of progress we've actually made instead of, you know, just some of this. Thank you.
Any other questions on staff reports? No, we're talking about staff communications at the current moment?
Somebody would like to build some units for the city, and he wants this reduced, and that reduced, and this reduced. My question, does he also want free land?
No, he has a spot picked in town.
Well, that's a plus. That's a big plus. Thank you.
Probably should have clarified, it's not on the city-owned property, it is on a parcel in town, a vacant spot in town. Correct, not city-owned.
Any other questions on staff communications and updates?
Give your, did I miss the First Street?
No, I got it here.
Okay, I just, I'd like the data to see if I'm crazy that a lot of people speed?
So, about 1.1% went over 11 miles an hour, and that's for eastbound traffic. For westbound traffic, about 3.26% went over 11 miles an hour for westbound traffic.
11 miles over the speed limit?
Yes. 3%.
Okay.
The average was between 1 to 5 miles an hour, about 14%. For eastbound and for westbound, from 1 to 5 miles an hour, 20%.
So, I mean, is that, what would you consider that normal on a road, or is that excessive?
I think it's a very low percentage of the people that are speeding in that area, so it's not.
And were there any that were in excess of 11 miles?
There was, there was one that went 48 miles an hour for eastbound. For westbound, one was 60 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Where are we at with our farm land, our two orchards?
We need to open up matters presented to the audience at this point? Are we done with staff communications, staff updates? This is not matters presented to the audience, currently we're on staff communication and reporting questions. Are there any other questions on that before we move? All right, at this point, we'll move to matters presented from the audience. Public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At this point, it's open, go ahead, Mr. Elfs.
What are we doing with the orchards?
So currently, the 18-acre parcel is not being, it has no agreement on it in terms of maintenance, and so our Public Works Department has been taking care of that here and there regarding. and there regarding cleanup and weed abatement and such. Same thing for the seven-acre parcel located at St. John and Catherine. We've been putting together a request for proposals on that seven-acre property, because that is outside of city limits, where we can obtain recommendations or proposals from people in the community if they're interested in moving forward with that. But it is not completed yet. There's some things I need to discuss with legal before we put that out, and then we'll end up putting that out as well. I'd like to also look at, I don't know if you'd call it an addendum or an option B, where we would show a portion of the 18-acre property located, where we would do the senior housing as well. I know that's up in the air, but for a portion that's not being used at this time, to try to include it and see if anybody would be interested in that as well, and then let that be at Council's direction, whether or not they want to pursue that when it comes in.
We've never seen a proposal that made any sense on that land, and that land is a parkland set there for the next 100 years. To take that land and put housing on it is a mistake. Second thing I want to talk about, tonight's meeting, you did a great job this evening, thank you. I think it was a tough situation, always is, every year I was on here, we had the same headaches. But an ad hoc committee is what they asked for and they didn't get it. That was a wrong message to send to the public. You should have let an ad hoc committee assemble, you have people in this audience that are very good at what they do, who would have helped all you guys, and you didn't use their expertise. It would have made it so much better. There's a lot of good information out here that you could have used, you should have. Next time you do that, maybe you should take this podium, turn it around, and put yourself in the corner there and talk so people could see you. They can't see you here when you're talking, it's hard to understand. Mention to us what page you're on, so we know where you're at. Those are things that could help us a lot, even the way this was formatted, it would still help. And the last thing was, what was it? Oh, you guys got to seriously think about economic development. I don't, I'm not kidding with you. If you don't, we're in trouble. We're going to end up in the same place we always end up, and it's called raise your taxes. So please, make a concentrated effort to do something besides sit there and talk about, oh, the taxes are going up. Let's go out and find, let's be creative. Let's get off there and just push. Let's invite developers to our town and have them talk to us about it. Let's find a solution for funding mechanisms for Escalon. Thank you.
When is McDonald's breaking ground, do we know?
The McDonald's applications or building permit are currently under review. The last update that we received is that they would be moving forward and breaking ground on August 7.
Okay, and when a person is building a new home, what, is there a timeframe that that needs to be done in if they've got like gates and stuff around the property?
So if it's an individual, like infill lot?
Like the regular house, you first lot, you're building a home.
So once you pull a building permit, you have one year from your last inspection. So whenever the last inspection was, they have 12 months from that period of time.
So to my understanding, there's a home that's being built directly across from mine on the corner of First and James, and I may be incorrect, but it was my understanding that they are to provide lighting for, on like that side of James, I don't know, some sort of exterior lighting, which they have, but they haven't finished the building yet. It's been a couple years, and so the light is not working. My question would be, would it be unreasonable to ask for some sort of lighting put in on James? It is pitch black. I currently provide the only lighting on my 60-foot fence. I have the garden lights, but between my house and the end of James that park, nobody's, there's no lighting at all, other than my property that I have to pay for. So I'm wondering if there was a part of the building that they did have to provide lighting on that home that's being built, if they could be maybe notified to start turning it on, so I'm not carrying all of the expense. The other option would be, is if the city can look into putting some sort of lighting on that street, there's kids that play basketball and ride their bikes, and it's just, it's really dark down there.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
All right, Cody Feller, 1550 Judith. I guess we don't have to do that anymore, but I'm, we're starting, just starting to get used to it, so. As I looked at the agenda today, certainly looked like you guys were going to have a closed session meeting again to discuss the EPOA contract, so. Couple things I wanted to bring out was, obvious I was doing a little survey to see what has changed since July 1, as far as other agencies, the pay. Think I emailed you guys some stuff there on that, so hopefully you guys saw that and take note of that before the city staff. Certainly, we are now 24.36% behind our closest rival Oakdale Police Department, so that's effective July 1, so they got a pay raise. The other thing I noticed is our city website does not have a current salary schedule. It's back to yes, last year, July 1 of 2022, so we haven't updated that to the current year there. So, you know, in talking to some folks, it was also my understanding, there's a rumor going around, we're fixing to lose another police officer, so, and I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. And when I had a little discussion with that individual, is, you know, they're living paycheck to paycheck, and, you know, so he said, I got to do what I got to do, you know? I got a family, and I'm living paycheck to paycheck, I got nothing, I can't take a vacation, I can't do all these things because I don't, I don't get paid good enough money to do that. I literally have enough money to, you know, pay my bills, feed my kids, and I got zero left over, so. Just for your guys' information, it's my understanding, he's leaving, and he's going to get a 33% raise the second he does, so just want to bring that to you guys' attention, because it is relevant, especially to the Council. I'd sent you guys an updated chart that was effective July 1, and I know the previous finance manager before you, so this isn't on you, you know, kept telling me for at least six months while she was still here, that those numbers were unverified, they were unverified, they were unverified, and all the MOIs and all the salary schedules are certainly readily available on those agencies' websites. So if you don't take my word for it, it should take you maybe two, three minutes tops per agency to verify what I sent you, so. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, for those who are not in the know, one of the things I encountered while updating that chart for you guys was that, and this is pertinent to the public who want to know about the animal control cost increase, so. Effective July 1, 2023, an animal control officer for Oakdale, for the City of Oakdale, now makes within 47 cents an hour of starting pay. 40 cents an hour, just 46, 7, I'm sorry, 47 cents an hour less than the starting pay for an Escalon police officer. So I want you guys to let that sink in and think about how that looks to your constituents out here in the audience and on YouTube, when the City of Escalon is paying its cops roughly equivalent to the same dog catchers that it contracts with, so it just really doesn't look good, it's pretty bad optically, and certainly that's probably some of the reason for the previous meeting here where we questioned the increase in cost of animal control, so. You know, if I was, if I was looking to get into, you know, a city or something from the outside, and I look at what it takes to become a police officer with a basic post academy, the standard is, I believe, 664 hours minimum for a basic post certificate to be able to be a police officer. So in researching the animal control thing, I looked into it, and it is 72 hours of training for the animal control officer, so, you know, these things, when you look at these things, the guy with the badge and the gun goes through a lot more training, goes through a lot more, he should be making a lot more than the dog catcher, so I wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. I know I did that with, you brought that to the Council, but the city staff, the folks who are supposed to be negotiating this contract with EPOA, you know, we're well over a year on an expired contract. We're now the only ones that are going that long, to the best of my knowledge, so I think it's time to put this thing to bed, and I certainly want to see that money before you guys pass a budget allocated for a fair raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for going overtime. I got to hurry, because I got to go. Actually, I've got about six things, but I'm going to hit it and I'm going to run. This is kind of unorthodox, I think we're all kind of a little on edge with kind of how the meeting went tonight with the budget. I think you kind of heard where a lot of constituency in the town is. Not a big representation tonight, hopefully we got a bigger one online, I'm not too sure. Hopefully we do. But I think a lot of the town, like I think me and Dominic kind of discussed in between meetings, that there's just a huge disconnect with the town. I mean, and if you guys don't know that, boy, I don't know what you're doing there, but there's a huge disconnect with this town and the Council and with the staff. No one's blaming the staff. I mean, sometimes I want to blame staff, but you know, the fingers point up to you guys, even though you're brand new. Sorry, you guys got a huge weight put on your shoulders. So getting back to that, with that point, I'm going to ask for something somewhat unorthodox, and that is two things. One is, push the budget again. I know we've kicked this can down the road a thousand times, we're not ready to sign a budget. You've heard that tonight, we're not ready. We've got, there's too many other things to close a can on, besides waiting until the 7th again, to hear arguments and then pass the budget when things are hardly being explored. You're going to have a 12-hour meeting if you want to do that. So I think we should kick the can, which I hate to do, but maybe consider kicking that can, and maybe another month. It's already been 7, what the hell, what's another, right? And try to, so we can get a better handle on this. Plus, I think with a couple small ideas that I have, and me and Dominic will talk about those probably this, I'm sure this week, you'll see from the data I will show, the disconnect that this town has with you guys, everybody. So that's one thing, is just kick the can. The unorthodox thing is, I know no one wants to hear this, because no one really wants to be here twice a month in the first place, while this craziness is going on, and it's , we're budget shortfalls, all these kind of things, we can't pay our cops, we pay them like dog catchers, like this gentleman here says, is, let's have council meetings once a week. This two-week delay is too laborious. You know, by the time someone says something like, tonight, if I say, hey, listen, I want to put a flag right out front here, can we discuss that? By the time I get back to it, then it's a month and a half down the road before we get a stupid little flag up. Too many of those kinds of things are happening. No one wants to be here once a month, I get it, I understand, and it'll probably actually increase staff costs, because they got to get paid when they're here, I get all that. However, maybe we can just kind of work together as a team and push that forward, I'm not too sure. But anyhow, I'd like to propose that, do what you want, let, you know, maybe let's meet sooner, more often, and maybe we'll get something more done. I mean, how many times we come to council meetings, and we've asked something two weeks ago, and everyone's still scratching their head like, were we asked that two weeks ago? Yeah, we were, we did, and there we go again, and now we're going to ask it again, and then two weeks off again. So it's, you know, to try to find something out, it's taking too dang long. So anyhow, that's just something I've thrown in my crock, you can do what you want with it, but that's my idea. Push the budget. The RV parking, that was one thing we didn't talk about, is, all the revenue, not a lot, I mean, it's minimal, I get it, but I didn't see it addressed anywhere in the budget. Where that is, and there's twofold to this one. One is, where is it in the budget? I didn't see it. I mean, it's minimal, but I mean, heck, we're going to argue for 1,900 bucks for electricity on, and in Balatera, well, hell, that's ringing up more than 1,900 bucks a month, I guarantee you that. So, because I know what RV costs, cost, damn, it's a storm, I have a few, and they're expensive. So hopefully you guys are getting some decent money out of that. To that point, Mr. Attorney, because you've been quiet all night, is, how are we justifying using city property to gather revenue from the constituency of the town when the people of the town own the property? So I know you probably won't answer it now, because I can't, I get it, you can't answer it, I probably have to talk about it, but that's, I mean, if you're using it based upon the same thing as, say, meters on the street, you know, that's one statute, but to this one here, I would like to know how that one got pushed through, because I'm sure there's a great explanation for it, but it sure feels funny. When I drive past here and I'm paying X amount of dollars a month, and go somewhere and put my RVs, and I come over here and I, and I know the city's making money somewhere that I can't see in the budget, and it's my building.
It's your building. It's your building.
It's our building. We paid for the building, we paid for the asphalt, we paid for the lane, we paid for it all. Where's that? Not only where's that, it's how can we justify doing that? Does everybody got to sleep good at night thinking, hey, we're going to take money from the constituent town and let them park on their own property and let them pay for it? I just thought that was kind of funny. Number two is, hopefully you can-
Running out of time, so I have-
I know, I'm almost done, I know, you've been very patient, thank you. This gentleman, the attorney, I'm sorry, your name, sir, is?
Frank Splonorio.
Frank Splonorio. I just want to know what room you're in, Frank.
Best best in Crewe.
Got it, and you're in?
Sacramento.
Got it. We're on this gentleman's point real fast. I know Jim, Jim Murray, great officer, been a great friend of mine for over 25 years. You lost him, you lost him because you didn't pay him, and we're going to lose another one. I know the gentleman that this guy's talking about, we're going to lose him. Little do you know, I think I know another officer that's considering leaving as well. We're going to lose people, because we're paying them like dog catchers. I'm sorry, that was a really good line, so I'm using it. We're losing people. We're worried about fixing crosswalks, not crosswalks, but fixing street, or what's it called, sidewalks down by your house, more than putting that back in the kitty and paying our officers. Let's readjust where we're putting these expenditures. I know, wrap it up, I know, I got the music coming.
Yeah.
I just suggest we kind of readjust what we're doing. Let's look at some of these budgets, a budget items that are proposed, and we kicked down the road. Let's think about taking some of the revenue that we want to put for, we're going to have 1.3 million dollars to go do some, put some sidewalks downtown, let them walk on the other damn side of the road, let's hire some police. So, that's it, gentlemen, ladies, have a good evening. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on any item?
Would also ask online.
Anybody else online that might have any questions that they would like to bring up to the Council or staff tonight?
Does anybody online have any public comment they'd like to make or matters presented by the audience?
It looks like, all right, well then we will close. Matters presented from the audience, move on to item number six, public hearing. Adopt resolution number XX23 approving final engineer's report and approving certain actions and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Sunrise Terrace Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2324. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give me one moment here. So these items came before the Council to move forward and schedule the public hearing. So this item before you is for adopting a resolution for that preliminary approval and assessment related to Sunrise Terrace Landscape Maintenance District. The assessment funds, the electricity costs, wall maintenance, landscape maintenance within the neighborhood's children's dinosaur park, and associated maintenance repairs within the Sunrise Terrace Development. This assessment district was formed back in 96, and for this fiscal year, 2324, no change is recommended with respect to the method of determining assessments. The assessment per single-family residential unit is proposed to be $121.68 for fiscal year, which is no increase from the previous year. The district's formation documents do not allow for an annual increase and have a maximum of assessment of $121.68. So attached is that preliminary engineer's report that provides further detailed analysis, and we'll do this, open and close a public hearing and take comment on each of these districts, and we do have Rick Clark available from Harrison Associates, who assists the city in updating and providing these engineering documents, if you have any questions on them. Okay, and Council can consider opening the public hearing for all of them at once if you'd like, or if you wanted to do it individually. It's a- Or if you wanted to do it individually, it's up, it's up to you.
I have to abstain from numbers nine and 10, as I live in the, that affected area. I'm willing to open up, what point in time do I walk out the door while they work on that one?
Open up six, seven, eight, then.
Okay. Well, this might well open a public hearing for numbers six, seven, and eight, at this time, if we have any questions on-
Six, seven.
Six, seven, and eight.
So he's, uh, the mayor's opening up the, uh, public hearing for the Sunrise Terrace Landscape Maintenance District, um, the Bellatera Estates Landscape Maintenance District, and the Westwood Country Landscape Maintenance District.
Can we put the proposed budget for Bellatera up on the screen?
The actual item number?
I'm gonna make a comment about Bellatera, but it's, uh, actually gonna-
Seven, and then he wants-
Cover all of the different landscape lighting districts, if it's all written the same way, and they usually are.
That's why they open them all at once.
Looking at estimate of costs?
And move it up a little bit.
A little bit more down, or for you up, so you can see the whole screen, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah. Contract services, park maintenance, uh, 2455 annually, plus incidentals, $33,210. You'll notice in the fine print there that it includes tree maintenance. Tree maintenance is not being done in Bellatera, and hasn't been done for three years. Pay that every year, tree maintenance needs to happen every year, to have the EDUs, the, uh, equal living dwelling unit owners, property owners, uh, get their money's worth. So I would like to hear from staff, maybe by next meeting, when we're gonna be doing this. Get out there, get those trees up 12 feet off the ground, uh, excuse me, 14 feet off the ground, 12 feet in the middle from the roadway, so, uh, RVs can go down there without getting scratched and, and blown apart. Fire engines don't get, uh, messing up trees and what have you. So, as you can see, we're paying for it, not getting any service, that was my thing. And if, if that's written the same way for all the other landscape lighting districts, that would apply. Thank you.
Any other comments on, uh, items six, seven, and eight, on the open public hearing from the audience? Anybody online that might have comment or concern to bring up? I'm not hearing anything. At this point, I guess we can close the hearing on items six, seven, and eight, so we're gonna close the public hearing. Then we will-
Frank, can we motion?
Yes.
For six, seven, and eight? I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the res- uh, items six, seven, and eight, the appropriate resolutions for the Sunrise Terrace, uh, Landscape Maintenance District, the Bellatera Estates Landscape Maintenance District, and the Westwood Country Landscape Maintenance District.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries five oh. At this point, I will step out for items, uh, eight and nine.
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten, excuse me.
And can you just state your, um, conflict?
My conflict is that I actually live within that district.
Okay, both of them?
It's the estates, both of those on the estates, so nine and ten.
Lighting and ones-
Okay.
There's two different ones, instead of all on one, on that particular development.
Got a BAD and an LMD.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mayor Protem, I'm gonna take over.
You can go ahead and open these at the same time as well. I'd like to open up both these at the same time, nine and 10, for public comments, sorry, a little louder. Anything online? Council?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, for approving the levying collection of assessments within the Estates Landscape Maintenance District and the Estates Benefit Assessment District per items nine and 10.
Will second that.
All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Since I came all the way up here to go into the meeting, I thought I'd stand and introduce myself, your all-new faces to me. But I've been doing these districts for the City of Escalon since nineteen, uh, 2009. So I know them all quite well. And this is a, a, a process you're gonna have to go through every year. It's boring, it's mind-numbing, but the law states we have to have these two meetings, you have to do it this way, that way, and so, just for your education purposes, you're gonna see this every year, and it's just as boring every year. Thank you. Oh, again, Rick Clark from Harrison Associates.
Nice to meet you.
So we had all of you in favor, were there any nays?
I, I don't believe there's any nays, right? No nays.
Okay, so for this item, we'll have four yeses, zero nos, and then one abstained.
So we get, um, Mayor Dave Bellinari back?
Do what you gotta do.
That's alright. Alright. At this point, we're gonna move to item number 11, administrative matters, review and discuss schedule of user fee updates for this next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is being brought before the council, um, at this point in time, as reviewing proposed update to the city's schedule of fees, and directing staff, uh, to schedule a public hearing on August 7th to review these fees. In past, uh, meetings, um, when staff has brought fee adjustments to past councils, um, there's always been, um, a, a concern with adopting them right away, wanting time to review. And so what we're doing is providing these fee increases, um, ahead of time, and scheduling the hearing for the next meeting, um, so that you are, uh, able to, you know, review it thoroughly, um, ask any questions of staff, um, and, and review these fees. So the, these fees are for the 2324 fiscal year, um, and as a part of our ongoing, uh, operations, staff reviews and periodically recommends revising certain fees and establishing, uh, various new fees for services provided by the city. So back in 2018, the city council adopted and updated user and regulatory fee, uh, schedule, which was based on results of a comprehensive cost of service study. Um, and during those interim years, uh, the city has authorized inflationary adjustments to those fees. Um, so this year represents an interim year, uh, update, uh, where updates, uh, will be primarily intended to apply to the authorized inflationary adjustment and to incorporate feedback received subsequent to adoption of the city's current schedule of fees. So these user and regulatory fees are established by the city council. The city's fee schedule is a, a compilation of fees for the city's services provided to members of the public. The advantages of updating our user and regulatory fees include assuring that fees are set based on current costs, and approved cost recovery objectives while providing transparency in the fee structure for the city's development-related and other municipal fees. So the fee schedule identifies fees for services and activities provided at the request of or on behalf of a sing- of a single party, as opposed to the public at large. Examples of user and regulatory fees collected by the City of Escalon and municipalities throughout California include, but are not limited to, planning fees such as entitlement review and review for compliance with the zoning code, building fees such as permitting of new constructions or modifications of existing structures, engineering fees such as map review, encroachment permitting, and public improvement review, police fees such as vehicle impound and finger, uh, fingerprint rolling fees, reserved park area, facility use fees, and recreation program participation fees. Then we also have user and regu- like, the regulatory fees specifically exclude taxes, assessments, franchise fees, development impact fees, fines or penalties, and utility rates and service charges. Um, so those all come to you separately. So an industry best practice and California statute are in harmony. User and regulatory fees should be set according to the estimated reasonable cost of service and should bear a fair and reasonable relationship to the payer's burdens, honor, or benefits received from the activities and/or services provided by the city. Recovering the costs of providing fee-related services directly influences the city's goal of maintaining fiscal stability while continuing to provide quality essential services. Additionally, ongoing review and adjustment of fees provides multiple benefits, which include increasing the availability of general fund revenues to be used for services and activities available to all residents and businesses, such as public safety services, keeping pace with general cost inflation, avoiding fee spikes that are more likely to occur when municipalities leave fees unchanged for multiple years, um, or multi-year period, providing fee payers, city staff, and city policymakers with a pattern of consistency that provides information for forecasting and decision-making processes and purposes, and helps meet fee payer service level expectations by collecting fees to fund the existing level of services provided. Also encouraging generational equity among fee payers who avoid long-term stagnation of fees followed by significant fee increases. So during these interim years, the council authorized inflationary adjustment to fees. The inflationary adjustments are based on the annual percentage change in the All Urban Consumer Price Index, for Consumer Price Index, San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward CPI, and for this upcoming fiscal year 2324, that percentage change in CPI was 5.6%. So the majority of fees are proposed to be adjusted by 5.6%. For rounding and administrative purposes, some recreation and program participation fees are proposed for adjustment beyond the 5.6. Example would be rounding a fee to the nearest $5 increment. Uh, changes beyond 5.6 do not exceed 10% or $10. So this table, uh, reviews a summary of changes in fees, and then the intent of these adjustments is to reflect the gradual increase of cost due to inflationary pressures. And then the recalibration of these fees simply provides an offset of existing expenditure needs rather than a source of, of funding for expanded service levels. Thus, there's no net incremental revenue expected. Um, we do have our consultant, if there's any questions, um, currently, and if not at this point, um, staff, you know, is here to either review the schedule of fees with you, or at this point, um, moving forward with scheduling that public hearing to formally consider these at the next meeting, which is scheduled for August 7th, um, and we can discuss them then as well, if you like. So either or is fine.
Any comments or questions up here at the council level on this? Yes, sir. Questions, Mr. Mayor?
So, um, so Pete, do we know, I mean, talking about the budgets, do we know, um, how much the city brings in revenue per year? I mean, obviously it depends year to year, but on average, for all these fees?
I don't, I wouldn't have the information, I'd probably have to look more thoroughly into it to get an idea.
Well-
They're all spread amongst departments, so-
Okay.
If you're able to define a department, maybe it'd be a little bit more helpful, but they're all spread amongst, depending on where they're being-
So one of the things that I used to hear all the time before I became a council member was, man, city charges fees for absolutely everything. We can't do anything without getting charged a fee from the city. And so, I, I don't know what the basis of putting together this entire schedule of 34-plus pages of fees together. Or what was used as a reference point was other cities or other municipalities. But, I'm kind of curious if, if there's any way that we can streamline some of these fees into more of a, I mean, 34 pages of different fees in a city the size of Escalon seems a little much, if you ask me. And I don't know if our comparison, I mean, just for comparison, other cities are same size, also have 34 pages worth of, and I, granted, it's fees for absolutely everything across the board from the city. But number one, I guess, the really big thing that I'm considered, I'm, I'm wondering, in particular, are the developer fees and things of that nature. I mean, obviously, we can't talk about, get into very specifics, that's the purpose that we're gonna do our homework and hopefully come back and talk about, but I'm just wondering, if there's any way that we can streamline some of these fees so that our constituents don't feel like they're being charged a fee for absolutely everything.
So by streamline, you mean consolidate? Streamline would be like processing quicker, um, where I think you're meaning like, uh-
Consolidation is probably a better term.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, uh, clearly.
Right.
Um, and so, I would say that in the years that I've been here, um, we have, uh, added new fees, um, or new, assessed for new fees or specific fees, and where that comes from is, is people who don't necessarily fit the fee that's indicated. And so typically, when we have new fees, an example would be the one that we did most recently, and it's been so long, I can't remember if it was with this council or the previous council. Um, we had somebody that was interested in making an update to their solar system, and they didn't care for the current fee structure, because it was going to make them pay much more than they felt like they needed to pay. Um, and so that item came before council, um, and it was discussed, and council, or excuse me, council directed staff at that time to look into it and try to create a fee for that particular circumstance. Um, and so we sat down with our building official, um, went over that and, and was able to create that fee, um, which it's my understanding with that applicant, they still didn't want to pay that amount, but that was where we, um, compromised. But we, in order to do that, we had to create a new fee to address his specific concern, and so now we have that fee on the books, um, because it was adopted by council that way. Um, and so typically, when you're seeing new fees proposed, it's either a new service, um, or it's a service that's been identified that doesn't fit into the level of fees that we have, um, and so it's, um, it has to be assigned a different fee in order to accurately charge somebody. So maybe consolidation is, uh, you know, maybe taking use permits and variances and certain, certain actions that seem more routine in nature, and maybe putting them all under one fee, but it's hard, because some of those use permits and variances, uh, variances could be very comprehensive, depending on what the work is, and some of them could be very simple. So, so that would be more of like, uh, what we did back in 2018, where we did a comprehensive analysis. This item that we have currently is, is adjusting for that CIP, which is considered more routine. We will be due, uh, for doing a more detailed analysis on these fees, and that's where we can come back, um, or bring something to council, or provide that direction to our consultant to look at that, uh, at that level. Maybe we workshop it and have him come and, and discuss that, um, as a model, if that's what the council's interested in, and, and that gives him, that would give him something to move forward on when we do that next.
I'm just thinking that, you know, cities are similar size, Gustine, other cities like that in the area. If we could look at what their fee structure is in comparison to what we have, and see if they have 34 pages worth of fees for the City of Gustine. I mean, you could come back and say, sorry, City of Gustine, you have 42 pages. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out a way to-
We got 215 fees out of the 37 pages. What that summary we got here on the, on the sheet here, so I guess that's where I would focus, is how many different fees do these other cities have, I guess, hmm?
And some of these fees we haven't utilized in many years, um, but it always happens that way, we, we do away with a fee that we don't utilize, and then that type of project pops back up, and we don't have a fee established for it. And so, it's, it's really us trying to catch everything and, and make sure that people are charged appropriately for it. We, we're not looking to overcharge people, um, but we're, you know, and if we're going to, to undercharge people- undercharge people, that's at council's direction, not at, at staff's decision, and so.
My other, only other question is, so included in here are business license fees, and Councilman Engel brought up, he really wanted to look at that at a future meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Do we look at these business license fees and then have the agenda item, or do we review the agenda item and then talk about the business license fees?
Can I make a statement real quick? I think what, my understanding is these fees basically are covering costs.
Correct.
And so if we wanted to stimulate more business, cutting costs to, you know, cutting the red tape, so to speak, allows for this business to come in, thereby creating more revenue, which offsets the fee that we were going to charge in the first place. So like what Councilman Engel was talking about, I think those are things we can do. Like Mr. Allison said about an economic development type thing, you know, those are the things you look at. Where in these fees can we make adjustments to stimulate that certain area of the, you know, the town? So if it's economic development, for example, then that's one way that that can be done. I think, is that, is, is that kind of what you're getting at, Sean?
Yeah.
Mr. Councilman Eng.
Strowman.
Strowman, sorry.
No problem.
This is my, this is my marbles here.
It's all right.
Councilman Strowman.
Yes, that, that's exactly what I'm looking at. And so I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but Jalen, you're part of the team. So i- if you could help us and, and gather some of that information for the next meeting, that'd be really helpful.
Sure.
Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else up here at the council level would like to discuss any other part of that?
I do want to add something, though. I know Council Strowman, you had asked earlier about the revenues generated from these fee schedule. It's, if you refer back to the PowerPoint presentation, it's on Slide 17 where it goes over the current services, charges, the fines and forfeitures, there's the license and permits and recreational revenues.
Okay, which one for those again?
17.
Come on, page 17.
17?
Yep.
So it's the current services, charges, look at that line right there. So in that middle column right there, that was the estimated projected balance for fiscal years 2223. There's that fines and forfeiture in amounts of $30,000 right there. There's license and permit, expect to be at 158,000. And there's the recreational revenues. That's on the fee schedule too as well for 162,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody, we're going to open up comments to the.
So some of these fees are for animal licensing and control fees. And since we've contracted out with another service, I'm just wondering, is this something that we as a city charge as well over the fees that are charged through the Oakdale system, like the impound fees, for example, that we are supposed, I mean, it's, it's on here as we're increasing them. So we're not personally impounding, right?
Uh, we are not.
Is that something we also charge in addition to Oakdale charging? Or how does that work?
No, we don't. We, we, everything gets charged through Oakdale.
Yeah.
So the fees get applied through our fee system. They charge what we have. But we also license dogs still here in the city, either City Hall or the police department. So we do collect some money here as far as the fees.
Animal licensing is, is still in-house, but the animal services.
But some of these are not actually fees that we are going to be charging, correct? Is that?
Not as directly, no. They'll be with, with the City of Oakdale will charge for that service.
So those won't go into our general fund, those go to Oakdale. I mean, that's what these fees do.
They do come into our fund, I know.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
See if they're double counted or.
Um, so City of Oakdale would send us a report for it and would identify how much the amounts were, were received for the animal-dog licensing fee. So they'll charge us a certain portion, I forgot what the rate is, but then we get the remaining amount. And that offsets the, the monthly bill that is being billed by them. So kind of like when you're looking at, if an invoice is for $12,000, but they collect $500 in revenues, and then they would deduct kind of like what would belong to the city and.
Consolidate that with our bill that goes to them for services.
Yeah, so it'll be kind of reflected off there as a net difference versus having to pay the full amount.
But if they pick up a dog in Escalon, and Escalon fee is $50 and Oakdale charges 75, they'll be charged the $50 because that's the Escalon fee, not the 75, correct?
Correct.
Assuming the dog is picked up in the greater Escalon area. If your dog makes it though, you're going to pay the Oakdale fee, I would imagine.
And just to add to that, we did, city manager talked about, us talking to San King County shares for services, and they actually pay $300 per animal to take it to the shelter for them. So our cost would have been a lot higher if we would have gone through them versus Oakdale. And it doesn't matter what size of animal, a rabbit, a turtle, whatever, it's 300 bucks straight across. You'd be surprised how many rabbits are running around.
They, they use the word exotic, you know.
Any other questions or concerns here at the council level?
Okay, so those items are there before you, and we're just looking at, at this time to take a look at those, schedule that hearing for the 7th, and then we can go into that in more detail at that time. Yeah.
Let's go ahead and schedule that up.
And I do have Councilmember Engel's item for business license scheduled for, for a meeting in August. It's probably going to be the second meeting because it looks like a lot of stuff is going to be on the meeting of the 7th. And we do have staff working on compiling information on that, on that specific direction.
Last item for the evening, item number 12. This is for staff. Consider an urgency interim ordinance imposing moratorium on the issuance of any new permit, license or entitlement for any new smoke, smoking lounge or smoke shop in the Sea of Escalon.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. This item is what it says it purports to be. Currently, there are eight licensed smoke shops within the city. Staff feels that there is currently a lack of regulatory oversight over those. Our code is a little bit lackluster in regards to articulating use, development standards and other health and safety regulations related to the business. The city does have police power to regulate tobacco businesses, tobacco retail businesses. And there was some recent police activity that suggested that there were decoy buys where an underage purchaser was able to purchase, successfully purchase tobacco pretty easily. We also have a couple of code enforcement administrative hearing matters that relate to tobacco businesses. And the thought was, in consultation with city manager's office and your planning department, was to impose an active moratorium, which is a temporary, temporary stall on any new tobacco businesses in the city. Also for a city this size, eight is a pretty decent number, healthy number, or unhealthy number, depending on how you look at it. And so the idea was limited eight while, and give the city space to think about it, analyze it and figure out what, if anything, it wants to do. It's a temporary moratorium, so it's initially 45 days, but the city can extend it up to a total of one year, so it can extend it for another 10, 10 months and 15 days. So we'll bring back something in August, because I'm anticipating we'll need more time to look at it. In the meantime, it'll legally protect the city from having to process any more business license applications that come in for this use. This is an urgency ordinance, so typically you require two readings for an ordinance to go into effect. First reading at one council meeting and then a second council meeting, and then it goes into effect 30 days after. Because we are proposing health and safety reasons related to this, we can make the findings for the council to adopt this as an urgency ordinance, which only requires one council meeting, which would be this council meeting, and it'll go into effect right away. The only difference between this ordinance and your garden variety ordinance is an urgency ordinance does require four-fifth vote of the council, so super majority, whereas a normal ordinance only requires three votes. So that's kind of the long and short of it. It's actually is a pretty moderate step, I would say, without changing course. This just preserves the status quo. That's all this really does. And I don't think there were anticipated to be any active applications anyways with the city, so it's not like this is affecting any potential developers that we're aware of. Again, this is just to preserve the status quo while the city contemplates and thinks through the issue. And that's pretty much the long and short of it.
So what we're looking at at this point in time is, is giving us time to, to get an ordinance draft available and maybe also conducting a workshop to provide any input from the, the residents if they're interested. Along with what was previously given by council, this item did come before council and direction was given from council to update our ordinance to tackle some certain things. And so those would be taken into consideration, a draft would be out there, and then we'd conduct a workshop to provide any additional feedback that we may want to make changes to in the future.
Open up for discussion here at the council level. Any comments, concerns or questions?
Yeah, I've got one.
Sure.
Does Orlando's intend on selling tobacco? Does this affect them?
Let's see here. Orlando's is currently not on the list of licensing, so it does not appear that they've obtained their license yet. So if they were to try to pull in the next 45 days, they might have to be held on that.
Or if it were extended potentially up to a year?
Depending on how it is done, correct?
And these licensed tobacco retailers include grocery stores and liquor stores? Is that correct also?
So everybody who's, already has a license to tobacco licenses, there's eight of them in town, they would not be infected. They're, they're already active. So this isn't going and freezing anybody, it's just anybody who applies for new.
That's included in the eight is what I'm asking, the grocery stores and.
Correct, yes. We've got discount liquor and cigarettes, Dollar General store, Escalon Plaza Mini Mart, Family Dollar store, H&amp;M Food Store, Marvall Emporium, Rite Aid and the Z Smoke Shop, which is currently closed even though they're active on the.
I'll just make my statement. I, I, I think if it were to hinder Orlando's at all, they've, they've done quite a bit, and gas station seems like a likely place, somebody would buy tobacco, and it would potentially hinder their operation. And I'll just say it upfront, I'm in opposition of hindering the advancement of Orlando's at all.
I would assume that they've already, would have already reached out for that, right?
So I was consulting with our attorney, and they're under an active building permit moving forward with construction. And so they can be included in this.
So.
Excluded from this.
So wouldn't affect.
Included in these lists of businesses, if you like.
So would it have to be rewritten, or we, we can just amend that now?
You can adopt it as is. I would consider since they have an active building permit on file, they have a vested right to what they're doing for purposes of, of this.
Will it create an additional step for them? Will they have to appeal that or file an, an additional application or pay an additional fee?
No, so they're just going to allow, they're going to allow to go through just like, without this ordinance is in effect. So whatever obstacles they face has nothing to do with this ordinance. It'll be things that they would have had to deal with anyways.
And just to keep the city out of, out of any potential litigation by a business that we're wanting to obtain a business permit, that's, that's, I'm assuming the advice you're giving us is.
Yeah, for, yeah, for hearing, for hearing about this for the first time, my advice is to let them, since they are substantially long in the process and they're starting construction, to let them continue with the process. This is to really get all new applicants, to prevent all new applicants from that. And like I said, this is the first time hearing that there's one in the queue. I would recommend the council elect to allow them to continue to go forward as this ordinance would imply to them.
And just to put understanding out there, just in case, we would be issuing business licenses, they would obtain their tobacco license through the state. We don't issue the tobacco license, just to make sure that everybody is aware.
Any other council comment or concern? Open up to the public out here in the meeting if you'd like to speak.
Wasn't there another place that was coming in here, McHenry and Roosevelt, a convenience store or something? Or did that fall through?
That project was approved by the Planning Commission. It, it has not moved forward since then, but at the rate that they're moving, I would say this would be all completed and done by the time they pull for a license.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, there, there are ways out.
Kind of consider that. I mean, as sales tax revenue, we certainly need it, so that, they would need to be considered as well.
Yeah, they, they haven't broke ground at all, and so this should be completed by that time.
All right, cool. Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
I may have missed it, but I don't understand why. Why do we need this ordinance?
So currently, past direction from staff was to move forward on amending the municipal code to address these items. This came up around that time where one of the businesses, you know, painted themselves lime green. That's, that's what started it, and then we also had indications where they were selling to, to minors. And so the council at that time felt that our laws and specific to smoke shops as well as drugs, paraphernalia and other items needed to be reviewed. It's been several years since those have come up. And we're needing more time to be able to do that accurately and make sure that we're amending portions of code and, and matching up chapters so that things are, are caught and clear. And so this would be in order to finish that ordinance and, and move that one forward at this time.
I'm still confused. Mayor Bellinger, you always bring up what does this cost in the city to hire our attorney here to write up an ordinance that our police chief and the police department's already taken care of. I'm, I think this is just a morbid offer.
I think we're looking to bolster our current code, so it's a lot more clear for direction for the police force and for those in business, they know what they can and can't do in our city.
You, you can't, you can't sell tobacco unless you have a tobacco license, right?
I think what's going on is there's a, there's a big pushback from the community that they were not happy with how things played out. We ended up finding out that they were not only on top of that, that, you know, it seemed to be that they were targeting children with the advertising scheme. On top of that, you look at the, the, what do you call it, the lack of, of clarity in what we're trying to achieve.
You know, you've already brought up a couple instances here where you're going to hold off other businesses coming into town. I'm against that. I don't think that there's been an overabundance of these violations that require, you know, such a knee-jerk reaction to, to write up an ordinance. We've, we've already taken care of the issue here. You've got, that, that building, if I'm correct, sold three times?
I believe so, but certain.
Well, three, three times, they didn't get a business license, they didn't have a tobacco sales license, and how come nobody from the city went in there and asked them for that? I mean, you can have all these ordinances here, but you got to go in and you ask these people the question, and then you shut them down. So.
I believe it happened in.
How much is this going to cost us to write this ordinance, Mr. Mayor?
Chief, I believe it happened in two places, right?
Correct, sir. It happened in two different places.
It happens in the bars.
Let him speak, please.
Okay. Yeah, it happened in two different places, but that's only one time that we busted each place. How many times has this happened? They wouldn't see it. Okay? So the reason we're trying to rewrite this ordinance is so we have a better handle on when we can effect, effectively.
Well, this, this is ending everybody. This is a complete and total rejection of anybody new.
It's a moratorium for 45 days.
A moratorium.
For 45 days, yeah.
And.
It's not for everything.
And then you're going to come back with an ordinance, and then it's going to.
Updated ordinance.
Updated ordinance, and it's going to rule out any new businesses.
I don't, I doubt that would happen. Like rule, rule out. Like, rule, rule out, rule out businesses?
Mm-mm.
Well, that have tobacco in it. I I I'm just.
I don't believe the ordinance, I don't believe the intent of the new ordinance updates are to cancel out anybody coming to town for tobacco. It's to update laws around and surrounding their ability to operate in business and the rules of how they operate within our guidelines as a city that we can enforce. So we have better teeth to to enforcement on issues that are bad.
So some of the items that were discussed by council when this came forward were, um, buffer zones, especially around schools or areas that there's high traffic, uh, of children. Um, that was the emphasis of council at that time, was to focus on kids and making sure that whatever they're doing, um, wasn't luring kids into the store or trying to a- attract them to that stuff, and that also included.
There goes AMPM and the liquor store over there and.
Those are already, those are already grandfathered in, they're already.
They're existing.
Existing.
Would you go in there and check to see if they're selling to minors?
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, you've got a program in place, seems to be working. You caught, you caught the violator here. If if you're gonna rule out new businesses, a moratorium from any, any length of time.
Right now, we don't have any situation where we can stop them from putting something in a, in a commercial zone anywhere near a school site. So by updating it, we can effectively get them farther away.
Maybe.
So no new businesses around AMPM, let's see, there, another shop over there wants to sell smokes. If we have a new ordinance, we can say, no, it's too close to the school, and limit that, and they have to go somewhere else. Without that, there's no ordinance, so we just have smoke shops all day, all day long down by Taco Bell.
So rather than going to the new business, they'll just go to AMPM?
Maybe so, but you want more options for our children to be able to smoke?
I'm just looking at this as a government function. I don't, it, you're making as some kind of moral judgment here, I think, is that what this is all about?
Safety.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask chief a question?
Yes.
So chief, I think you probably already just answered this, but of the eight licensed tobacco retailers, have the decoys been in the other six?
We haven't done that, uh, because we haven't had any complaints on those other stores. We did get a call on, I believe, third store. We went to check on it, whatever the claim was, they didn't have anything illegal in the store.
So is this, is this similar to, uh, building code violations? It's complaint-driven, or do we just show up randomly?
We usually go by complaint.
I just wanted to, uh, make sure that council was aware that we have definitions, um, in this moratorium that that give a specific definition to a smoke shop as well as a smoking lounge. Um, and so a smoke shop is a retailer whose main purpose is the sale of smoking and/or tobacco products, including but not limited to cigars, pipe tobacco, and smoking accessories for off-premises consumption at a retail establishment that either devotes more than fifteen percent of its total floor area to smoking drug and/or tobacco paraphernalia, or devotes more than a two, uh, than a two-foot by four-foot, um, section of shelf space for display of for sale tobacco products. And that the sale of smoking and/or tobacco paraphernalia, and this would include the electronic cigarettes and electronic vapor devices. Um, and so it is listed that, you know, that that's a retailer who's, that's their main purpose, um, would be for those items. And then there's a, a definition for smoking lounge, which I don't believe we've ever had in town. Um, so, but it is included because of the smoking portion. And they are become, they have become more popular over the last ten years or so.
So this is just a moratorium on the smoke, a new smoking lounge or smoke shop, not necessarily a grocery store with a less than two-by-four smoking section, correct? Is that correct? Okay, so just a specific smoke lounge and smoke shop. And with this, um, is the current law needs to be updated, chief, in your opinion? Is this something that would benefit you and the police for enforcing?
Yes, it does. It will give us a more leverage to effectively enforce, uh, the municipal code, and, um, you know, if they're violating the law, we we we're gonna be there to, you know, give them a citation, whatever.
Any other comments or concerns? Anybody online that would like to speak to this topic? Not hearing any, so, uh, we'll take it back to council and entertain the possible motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance, um, number XXX, I guess, an urgent interim or ordinance adopting a moratorium on the issuance of a new permit, license, or entitlement for any new smoking lounge or smoke shop in the city of Escalon.
Motion, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five o. At this point, we are going to move to council communication. So, uh, Councilman Ingle, what would you like to say tonight?
Oh, I'll keep it super quick so we can move on. Jalen, welcome. Glad to have you, glad we didn't scare you off first night. Thanks to everybody who came out and and voiced their opinion. Please, um, send an email with any concerns that you have in regards to the budget to the city so that that can be forwarded on to us, so that we we have accurate track of of your requests and can see them together to try and take action on things that we find.
Councilman Strowman?
Um, I'll just reiterate, uh, welcome, Jalen. Um, so Pete, thank you for all your hard work on the presentation. Um, I wanna give a big thank you to the Escalon Lions Club and volunteers for everything that they did, uh, the Park Feet, um, and the parade, um, despite the crazy, extreme hot weather this past weekend. Um, chief, thanks to the police department for everything you guys did. Um, and I have a farmer's market coming up this Wednesday, so might be a little warm, but come on down and I really appreciate everybody coming to the last meeting, uh, for the presentation. Really wanna thank you five for hanging in with us for the night and and the folks online.
Councilman Walker?
Uh, yeah, welcome, Jalen, to our lively town tonight. Um, it was, uh, welcome, you know, the budget's always kind of, uh, I guess lively would be a good word. So, um, thank you for everybody that came out and participated. Um, and then that's all, that's what we need is community participation, and that's what we're going for, and that's the intent. So, um, had a good time at Park Feet this weekend. It was hot, but it was nice when the sun went down, it was great music, it was a fun time, ad by all who came out. So, um, thank you for coming out, and I hope to see you at the farmer's market on Wednesday. Um, community participation is what keeps Escalon going, so I hope to see you out there.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, again.
Well, kind of a little bit of everything of, I guess, I say here, I guess. Um, thank you, uh, welcome to the team, Jalen. Um, obviously, uh, it'll be an interesting time getting your feet wet here, and, um, but if you have questions, you have real good staff to to ask, they they're pretty approachable. Um, so Pete, good job. Um, I know you, um, worked hard on that presentation, and hopefully we'll be able to get clarity and clear up that disconnect, uh, over time here. Um, as far as the, um, the citizens, um, I do wanna understand your concerns, so, um, hopefully you can reach out to me or I can reach out to you during this next few weeks here to kind of understand, um, uh, where these points of issue are, so that we can hopefully make them clear, uh, to to the rest of you, uh, and myself as well, and myself as well. Um, as far as Park Feet, um, obviously it was a pretty, pretty hot one, um, but I think it was, uh, well put together, and the Lions Club did a great job. Um, so I was, uh, really happy to be a part of that. Um, other than that, I don't have much else to add to it.
Thank you, I'll try and keep it brief, uh, real quickly with, uh, staff, thank you very much for all the hard work on the budgets, extend that to everybody else, chief as well, um, Supervisor Collins as well for Public Works, I know they had input on that budget as well, so thank you everybody for that. Uh, again, Jalen, welcome. Hope to see you around tomorrow morning.
Over here.
Also, kind of tag along with Park Feet, um, it was a great time, it was definitely a hot one. Uh, thanks to the Lions Club, Police Department, I know I'm gonna miss some folks, but, uh, I wanna thank the vendors that came out because they hung out all day. We had the, as as residents, we had the 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 fine choice to either come and go and pick and choose, but they hung out for everybody, for our community, for the whole time out there, for a day and a half in, what was it, a hundred and eight on Saturday, I think it was, in the hottest part of the day. So props to all of the vendors that that supported us and stayed open and didn't run for the hills, looking for some cooler weather for us for the Park Feet. It was a good time, looking forward to seeing everybody at the, uh, farmer's market on Wednesday. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the city council meeting, we're gonna go into a closed session here shortly, and we'll see you in, uh, about three weeks to the next meeting.